We've really been working on the electronics on that. We don't need to do a full rebuild on that.
Does Sparking work? That's good.
It's not Sparking. Yeah, so the latest, the latest work on the lift station is we want to put in some new controls because of the appearance of the electronics are the problem. One of the pumps is malfunctioning, so we need to probably replace a pump. We think that'll, that'll cure the problem. The switches are going to be electronic switches, so instead of the float, we'll also have switches to tell us when there's a high water mark. One of the things I've, I've added to this particular task item is, I don't have a picture of it, but if you've been by Kerry Lane, you know that the lift station there is pretty gruesome from the street. It's a giant sheet of plywood where they nailed the control boxes, big sheet of plywood. So, we really want to, we want to put up a new panel, we want to take the plywood down, put up a pedestal, basically clean up the Kerry lift station, basically print it up and get rid of all of the, the big huge pieces of plywood. And we should be able to get rid of probably seventy-five percent of its footprint. It does need to have the cradle and rails fixed. The cradle and rails are what the pumps sit on once they go up and down, so when you have to remove the pumps, they're not dangling in space when you're yanking on a cord, they're actually on rails. We, we haven't spent any money on the Kerry lift station. I don't remember spending any money on it the last ten years. Kerry is, it gets a fraction of the volume, but it, but it's been, it's been going in there.
I think we took the fence down right out of the pad mark.
Exactly. I think the fence, taken the fence down, but the actual lift station itself has been working tremendously well. As far as the sewer plant improvements, that's now coming full center. The sewer plant issues that we have, we're doing the site plan now. One of the key things, if you were in town today, I don't know if any of you were around, you saw the utility, big orange signs over here. CoServe is replacing utility poles in town, the leading poles. I haven't seen them out here in ten years replacing leading poles. The only reason they're here is because of one man. Ed has been running CoServe rag with, he actually came out and cleaned, you know, all the light fixtures in the shores. They've actually replaced the fixtures, the bulbs.
They're actually doing more than just replacing leading poles or replaces some that are straight up and down because of rotting underneath the ground.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing, and, and last time when Ed and I met with them, they were, the engineers are ready to help us redesign. We want underground, all the electrical down there, it's a disaster. It's daisy chain, it's a horrible setup, the sewer plant, and we need to put underground transformers in because we can't have overhead poles for the sewer plant. So what we're trying to do then is, we're trying to do a new site plan, and there's a lot of little pieces that go together. So we, you know, we're talking about moving the fence, we've got to put in a rolling gate on the fence. The reason why we need to move the fence out is we need to reclaim the space between the berm and the sewer plant. The berm came in after the fence, so there's more space there that we need to use probably with the new drying bed. So we want to reposition the drying bed. One of the things that we want to be able to do is that the, for instance, I don't know if you're going to talk about it at the end of the, the report, but I know the Parks Committee has talked a little bit about potentially putting in a basketball court. Well, the drying bed that it sits on, the base, is concrete. We have to pour a new pad for it because that's what, so clearly we would all want to do that at the same time because nobody, framing up the drying bed is like twice the size of this desk. As a standalone project, there's no way we're going to get guys to come and frame that up, but if we piggyback it, we need to be able to do some of these things together to get economies of scale. So, part of this is, we know we have to, we're going to replace one of the blowers, we're going to downsize the blower, we need to put an electrical pedestal in for the blowers. There's just a lot of rearranging that we have to do down at the sewer plant to get it ready. So, that's what this project entails. We originally budgeted fifteen for it. I'd like to take some of the money from the other projects and put it in here. None of the items is over ten thousand individually items, it's just a series of little improvements. And what we have to do is, we have to be ready, so if CoServe comes down there, and CoServe engineers are ready right now, if you talk to them, they're ready to site plan it for us, put the transformers in, they just need us to give them the surveys and what we want to do. The iron is, we got to do that now. So the idea that we're trying to get at is, like in some of the other stuff, don't wait until somebody's here, we've got to expand the sewer plant, let's get our ducks in a row. That's why when Clint did a lot of the work on the Water Master Plan, so when we got the opportunity came to get that ground storage tech, we knew exactly where to put it. Because Clint had already sited everything out, we'd already approved a master plan, so when the opportunity came, we didn't screw ourselves up and put it in the wrong spot. That's what we need to get to with the sewer master plan and, and get the lineups right with the sewer. But we got to start, we got to get surveys right, we got to get everything squared away. And we can't stop because CoServe comes out and then put in an underground transformer, and now we need to put in a pedestal for, let's say, the lift station. It has to have its own pedestal. But we can't stop and wait three weeks to have a council meeting to approve a six hundred dollar pedestal. And then we do the next thing, and then we got to stop because we have to approve, you know, the fact that we have to now pay CoServe five hundred dollars to run another underground one. So it's just a series of lots of little gaps. That's what this project is. That's the new capital improvement list. We've already approved sixty-five. It doesn't require council action to spend fifty, but I already know this is a consideration item.
It is.
So, anyway, this is the new capital improvement for the utility side. On the town projects, town hall improvements, this is basically letting everybody know, at some point we have to replace the front door. It's not legal, it opens the wrong way, it's a public building, that's wrong. So, it needs to be a handicap accessible door, it needs to open the right way, it needs to have the ability in a fire to have the right egress, it's totally wrong.
Which one?
Good for a house, bad for a public building. So, at some point we have to replace that. We, we approved drainage improvements for the, we know we have a problem over on Peninsula and Shore. We know we have a terrible problem there because of the inlet underneath on the driveways needs to be blown. We're loading the streets, it's going over, it's a four hole.
There's, yeah, the south side of Lakewood, drains through, across and through that, so it's really getting two streets and one twelve, there's twelve, so it's...
Yeah, it's not working, and unfortunately we inherited a buried situation on the other side of the street, which was there from before the town was a town. So, we don't have box, we don't have culverts over there, and, anyway, so that, that was that project there. We have to do that because the water's going over the street. And then, jumping ahead of what Playground was talking about, one idea is to do a kind of a half court over Whit Park. We had budgeted ten thousand on the Playground budget for that. We actually budgeted ten thousand last year, we only spent three. So that, that's just giving everybody a heads up, that's, that's in play potentially if Parks people come back.
Right, well, it's, it's going to be more than ten thousand dollars to, to create the basketball half court.
Right, and I think, what I'm hoping is that at some point it'll come back and then maybe the MDD will something, you know, go do something. I know the Boy Scouts, there's some Eagle Scouts who are helping the goals. I, I think there's the potential...
There is a cost estimate of about fifteen hundred dollars for the actual hoop, and then you have to, you also have to get some bids for lighting, which I want it to be cohesive with Dark Sky, so I've already started talking to some electricians so that we can get some bids for that. So, it, it definitely, ten thousand dollars, that's just the slab.
Well, right, so ten, yeah, ten thousand is what the city's in the, in the Parks line, so, and it's nice because, you know, the lighting, I mean, it's not going to be lit like, like a mask, but...
No, it's just one on each side.
But that's why the underground, it's like...
Yes.
Like right now when we're talking with CoServe about the transformers, because we're going to get rid of power poles, we're going to underground it there, right? We don't, we don't need power poles over there.
That's the goal, we'll see.
That's the objective.
The objective.
But the part of that is how do you get power? We need one, we want to do this when CoServe's here, so they can tell us how we do this, guys, you know?
Biggest matter of putting the transformer platters on.
Exactly. So, so that's something that's, that's out there, and I hope at some point, you know, got the...
It's good to know about lighting, because I hadn't considered lighting for that court, so we wondered if we could look into it.
Maybe at some point we'll get kind of scope of the thing, and then we'll try and figure out how to, because I know the Eagle Scouts, Sam Flightman's Eagle Scouts at one point approached us and said, as an Eagle Scout project, they were doing fundraising to put in goals. And, so that was, that was nice.
I know that CoServe has some grants for community development, and I was looking into that to see if they could grant us at least the lighting for the court.
That's good, I think. One of the other things that we kicked around, I think last year, was to put kind of a three rail, like a safety fence, basically a little three rail fence around the park on White Crest, just to separate it out, give a little more visibility for little kids. I, I talked a little bit to Gail Frommarge about that, and she suggested that we just do it, that we get people that use the park, and I talked to Chuck Place, Chuck has a Bobcat, he's agreed that he'll get an auger.
He'll go Saturday morning.
He'll auger in all of the posts for us, and I think we just get some of us together that have kids, and I think we can stick a vinyl fence together, and I think we can do it. And we're only talking about a hundred feet or so, it's not like, you know...
Only in terms of materials.
Yeah, it's just the materials, so I think that's something that would be, I think it'd be fun, I think it'd be a nice community thing, and we've got a lot of little kids right now, and I think there's a lot of people. So, anyway, that's potentially out there, the money hasn't been approved for any of that, obviously, other than we do have ten thousand dollars in the, in the Playground line that was approved, so that's, that's out there, so this would require, you know...
Ten months left? Ten months left, seven?
Yeah, so, I mean, so we'll...
As a work ethic.
We'll come back to that. But anyway, this is, this is the update on kind of the latest, you know, when we do the budget, we put the numbers in, and then I try and get a little bit better process and try to find it a little bit better. And this is the, this is kind of the new list.
I, I like the idea of, if the stone lift station isn't, I'd like to kind of, you know, make sure we finish up, get a good line of sight on stone Kerry, make sure that there isn't anything else that's going to spin, because I haven't got the power to hear, but if it really is going to come under like, like you're showing, then yeah, I, I think we move on to sewer plant, pick up some of the easy projects. Move the fence, do a survey, I think is obviously an easy one, move the fence to the property lines. And I think we talked about building a privacy fence to provide, you know, some screening, some people...
We need a rolling gate.
Yeah. Yeah, if we can make the gate a little bigger and a little easier, then it's less likely that the guy coming in with a roll off is going to take it out. So yeah, I, I like that idea. I don't know, that would just sort your purpose, but it's, continue moving on with some of the projects we can do.
So we've got a bunch of projects listed here. I think, I think I've been asking for a while, but we've got eight thousand dollars for fire hydrants. I think the question's been asked for a while, how much have we spent on fire hydrants? And do we have a project plan? And I think that the problem I have with going through this stuff is, there's no basic project plan, like what's the start, what's the end, who's going to bid on it, what are the risks, what are the rewards, right? So, if you take a look at the Laum or Oak Horns, other guys, when they put something up here like this, they'll have a project plan behind it, and behind that will give you the, the basic details, but you also have a chance to bid other vendors. I, I heard Elizabeth, you said you were getting bids on the lights?
Yeah.
So, just out of curiosity, are we bidding out the fifty thousand dollars in work?
Bidding out what?
So, I mean, on the screening, there's fifty thousand dollars of the projects. I'm asking, are we bidding that out? Have we, have we talked to multiple vendors to see if there's a chance to either do things differently, do things better, or save some money from that?
I guess I'm not sure what you mean.
So, I mean, instead of the total, is there a line item that's a bigger concern that you'd rather see?
I think it's the four, right? So if you look at all four of those, we've got the fire hydrants, we've got the lift, yeah, climate, that's the four. So, you have the lift station, which needs to be done, the sewer plant, and the plant improvement. All total is fifty thousand dollars of the work, right? We don't have a start date, we don't have an end date, we don't have a risk reward, we don't have, again, have we talked to other vendors yet?
Well, okay, let's start with the fire hydrants. What do you think the risk of the fire hydrant is?
Well, the risk is we've done three years not knowing how much we're going to spend. And if you spent over fifty thousand dollars, which you did, and you went over multiple years, that goes against the law, right? So the law says we have to bid these things out.
Well, it does not, it does not say that. It does not.
It does, Mark, we had this discussion, but either way...
Dan, what, what does the law actually say? The law says if you are, if you have a project that...
You guys are over talking. Come on.
If you have a project over fifty thousand, you cannot run it across a year and not bid it out, you've got to bid everything out. And my question is, when it comes to these sorts of things, if you just hit them together, which again, the work itself is, is not really the issue here, the question is, are we bidding it out? Are we getting the best parts, or is there a better way to do these things? Without getting multiple bids, you don't know that answer.
Okay, let me, let me put it out to my chair. Okay. You're wrong, because there are exceptions to the rule of bidding. You don't have to bid if it's less than fifty, you don't have to bid if it's life, health, safety.
If it's going to go over multiple years over fifty...
Absolutely. This is my territory. There are exceptions. You do not bid out services like attorneys, you don't build out, bid out anything that is life, health, safety. You don't have to bid out Francis Garden Services. There's all of these exceptions that deal with life, health, safety. Now, as far as the fire hydrants go, we, we have been putting in fire hydrants over the last several years because we don't meet current modern code. We are catching up and making the town safe. So, every one we put in makes the town safe, and we're going to keep putting them in until the fire chief, the Little Elm, says, "You're good." In fact, he was here today. He was here today and told us what a great job we've done, how great it is that we've upgraded and all of our improvements in improving the fire safety. The chief was here today, okay? So, that's what we're going to do. The lift station for Stone, we spent thirty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars in habitual repairs on Stone, so we're going to fix it, okay? We have to fix that. Now, we can't bid it out when tonight at one o'clock in the morning, when I leave here, I go home and the lift station is broken. We can't have a bid. We're not going to go on the internet and say, "Let's bid out, somebody that wants to come and replace something in the stone lift that's broken, and we fix it." We don't have the luxury of bidding out a little tiny thing to repair something. We don't do that. You bid out big jobs, because in order to bid it out, you got to come up with bid documents, okay? Now, as far as Liz getting the electrician, that's great, because she needs to come up and find out what the costs are, because if she's going to propose in the parks, if you want to light it, the next question is going to be, what's it going to cost? It makes sense, you got to go out and figure out what it's going to cost. But if we're going to have a plumbing leak, we call the Little Elm Service to replace the plug. We don't, there's, there's nothing to bid at. The sewer plant improvements, there's a series of little things that we have to do. It's a bunch of little things that we'll do, because that's the way it is, that's the nature of the piece. So, no, when CoServe shows up, CoServe is going to do the underground electric. We're not going to bid it out, CoServe is going to do it. That's what they do. So, that's how it works. And you're right, if we did the road project and we split the roads up to be going across different years, and we deliberately didn't send it out to bid, we'd be in trouble. In fact, there is one person that got in trouble for doing that in Lakewood Village. I won't say who it was, it was back in two thousand and six, that ended up in trouble because they did that. They didn't send it out to bid, okay? But we always do that, we follow the rules when we send it out to bid, but there are exceptions. The exceptions deal with life, health, safety.
I think the other, the other thing to this too, and why, why I like this, this isn't, so as part of going back to the impact needs, this isn't getting into the big ticket items of, okay, we're going to do a new digester, we're going to do a clarifier, these are just housekeeping things to get in and prepared for cleanup, get the site ready, one of which is, the fence isn't on the right spot, so let's make the, you know, do the, go do the survey, figure out where the, get the property lines, get the fence moved. When CoServe is beat up or anything else, so then let's figure out where we can get the opportunity to bury some wires, so these are things that we're just continuously improving.
So are we, are we going to contact a couple of fencing contractors to give us a bid on the fencing job?
It depends what we do. So in other words, yeah, I mean...
Or are we just going to give this all to Little Elm Services?
No, 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 so here's how I'm going with this. If, if we decide to pick up the existing fence and move it, that's something Little Elm Services can do. They can pick the existing fence up, like instead of being like this, swing it this way to cover the berm. If, like the sliding gate and actually the, the solid fence...
Building a new fence?
Yeah, no, they don't do new construction. So if we say for saving money, let's take the fence that runs this way, right, and take the poles out of the concrete and swing it this way, you know, I don't know what we're going to do yet, but if that's, turns out to be the right, you know, let's say that we do the survey and the fence needs to move three feet to the left. Getting a fence company to come out and dig up the old posts and move an existing, it's not going to happen. It's just easier to just do it. You, you have the backhoe, he can do that very quick. So, yes, if it's new stuff, they don't build fences, they don't build, they don't pour concrete either, so, you know, it, it would be somebody else doing that. We have to find out what it's going to cost.
Right, but what you just said is, we don't know what we're going to do yet, right? So if we don't know what we're going to do yet, why would we authorize this money? I mean, it sounds to me like we've already got a bid, it looks like there's a bid there. I haven't seen it, but, you know, if you just said we don't know what we're doing, why would we do this money?
I think it's a bid, I think that's just a re...
So why don't we do the survey and see what they recommend, and then we decide, do we need bids, do we not need bids? Can Little Elm Services do it all, or can they not do it all?
Yeah, look at what they're recommending for what? In other words, here's, here's the issue. We've got a bunch of things that are about to happen, but it's dynamic. It's dynamic, so when, when CoServe shows up and, and we start doing things, once we start digging, we might find out that the electrical line is in the wrong place, and we need to actually move the pedestal from there to there. We don't know until we get in there and start doing things, we won't know.
Well, does the survey kind of, that's what you have the survey for, so that they can kind of tell you?
The survey is the property line.
That's just a boundary line, that's the other boundary.
There's ones that are buried there since the sixties, and we don't know, make dig up and find out that there's...
So the survey's just so that they can tell us where the property line is?
So, and that's, that's a separate item, right? As far as trying to parse it out, that's moving the fence and increasing the area inside the fence, it'll be able to work, that's a...
Moving the existing fence, not...
Actually, not even moving all of them, just moving...
Maybe not moving some of it, I mean, kind of, you know, right now down there because of, because the property, to its west was never platted, it's unclear where the property is. There's a fence there, the fence was there almost the same time the city was. Just because a fence has been there thirty years doesn't mean that's where it is. We don't want to go to the pub, let's say we decide to move the digester to, to right here. We hate to find out later we kind of moved it another twenty feet. Now we've got twenty feet of dead space because we didn't know our property line was over there. So, we have maps of where everything is relative to each other, and we don't know where the actual boundaries are of our property. So once we get the boundary square, the issue is, we're on a short clock with CoServe. Right now, we have the ability to deal with CoServe and get stuff done.
You better take advantage of this term now.
Right now, we got to get moving on CoServe. So, I can't come back to you and say, "Look, let's take a three week wait over Christmas because CoServe's here, and in order to put this transformer in where it needs to go, it's going to be twenty-eight hundred dollars." I can't tell them, don't do it. We've got to wait three weeks until the council comes back to approve a twenty-eight hundred dollar expenditure. We'll never get it done, it'll be gone. So, this is a series, like, it's, it's no different than when we approved ten thousand dollars.
So where did you get, how did you, how did you come up with this figure of thirty thousand?
What I did is I estimated what would be a do not exceed number. If I looked at all those different things, okay, and I started thinking about, well, you know, where would we end up? You know, what's a number where if we did all this stuff, where would I like to be if I could accomplish all of that?
So it's an educated guess.
That's right. And, so my thing is, I can't tell you, because CoServe hasn't said, once we start digging to put in a, a line, we might find out there's a, there's something underground there that needs to be moved.
I understand, I understand, I was just trying to figure, I'm just trying to understand. I understand what you're saying, but I need to understand how you came up with thirty thousand dollars.
A guess.
If, if there's so many unknowns, how did you come up with the idea?
So, right, so aside from it being the best guess, it's also a do not exceed number, right?
So he sat, you sat with somebody and kind of came up with scenarios and say, what would be the worst case scenario?
No, I didn't say what's the worst case, I said, what do you think it's going to cost?
What, okay.
And I said, okay.
So, so you talked to one contractor, shouldn't we talk to at least one more and say, "Here's what we got going on, give me your best estimation."
It's an estimate, it's a do not exceed number. So, what's it going to cost for Sam to take the sewer line, the force made, and move it from the lift station over to the digester? What's it going to cost? He can't send that out to bid. That's not a bidable thing. He's the only one that knows where the plumbing is, and so, so there's, there's things, as they move, we've got to readjust some of the plumbing. So, part of it is saying, okay, Sam, you know, this doesn't include rebuilding the lift station. We may get into this thing, let's say that we decide, you know what, because of the way things are, this lift station has got to be moved. The lift station's forty years old, the lift station needs to be rebuilt, we say, "We're going to move it." Well, I can't do that, I've got to come back and say, "Look, you know, we need to, here's a new issue, let's come out, what do you want to do?" This is no different to me than if we approved, you know, ten thousand dollars for doing City Hall improvements. Well, we might spend fifteen hundred on new bathroom fixtures, we might paint the inside, we might have the electrician committee replace the breaker panel in the back because the fuse boxes are blowing. It's a series of little things. But once he comes in and he looks at it, he goes to put in a GFCI in the kitchen, we don't have it. And he says, "You know what, we need to replace, we need to add a fuse box, we need to add..." You can't stop and crash and burn, because now you got to wait for this next bit of thing. You, you either take the project as a whole and get it done, as long as you don't go over the budget, but there's too many little things there to pin down each little item to say, you know, if we have to move a pedestal, I don't know, a thousand dollars? I don't know, CoServe's going to do it in bills, you know? And are we going to have to move it? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think there's a little bit of a, a want or a wish of a perfect world. We don't live in a perfect world in Lakewood Village. We don't have staff to put together detailed plans, we don't have the time to do that. So, I, I just think a lot of us need to realize that we need the flexibility to manage and do, for example, the things we've been talking about here.
Little Elm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask, Little Elm Services doesn't have any money on material, we pay the material.
Right.
Where do the material come from?
The charge, labor.
Labor. And if we had somebody, if we had a building department on the state, we're not building the utility department, would, if we had a guy here that was, if Sam was an employee, would we bid it out? Kind of, kind of being, I guess, you know, pretty moral, right, that's, a larger city would have something on staff, you know? Oh, sorry, I don't like your back, I'll work, we're going to contract it up to somebody else.
So, just to kind of point out the clues between that, so I don't know what you guys, you know, we recently put a kitchen in a little while ago, right? And kitchens are expensive, right? They just, I don't know why, but they are. And before we spent a dime, we had diagrams, we went back and forth, we reviewed it, we had, we actually went to several different companies to look at the stuff, and we made a decision and said, you know what, that looks good. The, the problem I have is when you look at this, is that the rewards are there, but But like, you know, we had talked about spending forty thousand dollars to redo the lift station on stove, which at the time, you know, made sense. And all of a sudden, you know, reading this correctly, it's twelve thousand, right? So the numbers dropped from forty to twelve, which in theory would be a good thing to save money.
Or not rebuild it, right?
Right, or not rebuild it. So that's the question, is like, shouldn't we be discussing the pros and cons? I mean, we know that's the one lift station that's always causing problems. We had talked about, hey, for once, we're gonna fix that one. Now, all of a sudden, we come back and we're like, "Ah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna rebuild it. We're just gonna do, you know, pressure switches and some new pumps and stuff like that." And the cost goes from forty to twelve, and then all of a sudden, goes to the sewer plant. I'm not saying necessarily that it's wrong. I'm saying is like, I would expect there to be the detail presented to the council that would say, "Here's the plan, here's the diagrams, here's the engineer's report, here's the bid. Now make a decision which way you wanna go." What I see here is, you know, just a big shift without any detail behind it. I don't know how you vote on something like this.
Well, I think, again, Dan, look, here's how this works. We don't have engineers. We don't have staff. This is me. This is regular people. You seem to wanna put the load on this perfection, that we have all these tons of people that do all this, all this work, that suddenly just appears.
They're called veterans.
So this right here is my best guess. Now, does anybody wanna micromanage this? Do you wanna go to the sewer plant every single day? You wanna meet with CoServe during the day and micromanage this? You wanna stop every project for every single thing that goes on?
We never wanna block that.
We, we have to do the steps that are going here. We don't have staff. We don't have, then we have a city engineer, and you said, "Look, we need to go down there and do the sewer plant job." That's what he would do. He'd have a budget, he'd go down and he'd do what needs to get done. That's what, that's what the employees do. We don't have any employees. Linda's not gonna do it. So this is, the best I can do here is to say, I don't have a year to come up with a detail, every single possible scenario, to come up with something. We can't wait. Here's the best guess. And we'll not go over this number. If we get close to this number, I'll be back and tell you where we're at. But we gotta get moving. We cannot sit here and look at every single fifty dollar expenditure and say, "Let's bid this out." Let's do something. We, we can't. We can't operate that way.
Actually, you can't foresee what's gonna go wrong. I mean, with a kitchen, you know exactly, we're gonna talk about cabinets, we're gonna talk about fixtures, we're gonna do this. You're dealing with a lift station. Well, it's not just the top, it's the plumbing that's covered that we can't see.
It's my best guess of what the job entails. I don't, I can't tell you everything. It's the best guess.
On the stove lift station, I mean, the forty thousand was, that's again, like the thirty thousand here. You know, it's the worst case.
Yes.
And then after, after we got into it, we found out that, okay, it wasn't the doomsday scenario that we expected. And that's why it's, well, wrong.
Wrong. I mean, I think we, I think it...
I mean, that's how I report it, right, am I not?
Yeah, there's no reason to reconstruct. This is our last gasp at trying to do a technology.
So it's, I mean, there's not really a guarantee that after we put the switches and upgrade the controls and the pumps and the monitoring system, that there won't be any other continuing issues with it.
There hasn't been any issues other than power. We're not sure what's causing the problem.
CoServe's been monitoring the power. I don't know if they've gone back with the results on that. The night that Sam and I were down there, we could tell it was a master. One of the things that he's done is he actually went back and has done all the math on it to find out, okay, over time, the masters selected, he's put it somewhere in the place. And now the thing is, now it's just been, not been an issue since he's done that. Now to your point, is there any here? No, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's electric, mechanical, it's a wet environment, sewer gases, it's just, it'll be something else in the foreseeable future. There isn't a reason to completely overhaul and replace it. There's so many of those things that we can do.
Just out of curiosity, if you wanted a different better, wouldn't they give us some sort of guarantees?
Better for what?
You get that point, right? So like, if you brought in a plumber here and you said, "Hey, we're gonna, just like you do with your water system, we have, we have badgers, we need to work on that." When there's problems, we have someone to go back to, right? You've got someone to hold accountable. As we continue to do these things in this manner, and sometimes they work and sometimes they don't, there's no one else to go back to. If you, if we bid this out and you get multiple vendors, and one guy says, "Hey, I will guarantee this. If this breaks, I will fix it in no time." So we'll do it. And you look at this thing, you have different towns, and it looks good. You go with that now, that solves all those problems, right? Because you've got someone to hold accountable. What I see here is...